This conference will now be recorded.
Good to know.
Okay, this is Douglas Dunn, President of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'll call email in meeting at 5:55. Call to order, commission members, John Ballas. Is John present?
Looks like he's here.
Well, Douglas Dunn is here. Nancy Pirana, I heard you, right?
Yep.
Sandy Housman. Sandy.
I think she's caller number four.
I talked to Sandy and I told her that we were... She was having trouble getting on. And so then I tried to... I was here in City Hall and I tried to get on and it just found... Having to change your passwords and all kinds of things. And I told her, hang on, that we would be opening.
Jennifer Ryan.
What did you say?
Jennifer Ryan. Who all is here?
Kirk Ayers, an applicant.
Okay.
The ones I'm seeing, Doug, is we've got Nancy. We've got Mike. We've got you. That's not quite a quorum yet. And then there's, I guess, Mr. Ayers. It's one of these callers here. And John is all black, but it shows him being on.
That's a different.
Oh, John Ballas.
Contact information here. I will call Don. His mailbox is full and he can't accept any more. I think maybe...
He was squeaking.
Yeah, it's showing him up here. Let me try calling Sandy. This is Joe? Yeah. Yeah, I did. Try getting on. Everybody else is... Or not everybody else is on. Plenty of people are on. Try it now. Thank you guys for bearing with us. Oh, my goodness.
If Don can't get on, he might have to log out and then log back in.
Have you tried...
I tried that.
Have you tried going on the telephone? Yeah. 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 If you go to... Just use the number. That's what I did and I went on. But... Hello?
I can't hear.
I'm gonna email John and tell him that...
You're somebody.
Hello?
Is that Sandy?
Yeah, I'm on the phone.
Excellent. Thank you, Sandy.
Uh-huh.
Okay, well, we have a quorum.
Hey, the people here.
Yeah, we've got Nancy, Mike, and Doug, and Sandy.
Okay. How do you want to proceed?
It's really hard to hear.
Do we want to reschedule this meeting?
Well, we got public notices out. This reschedule is going to be really difficult and expensive. Can you guys hear me at all?
I can hear you.
Sandy?
Why don't you?
I can hear when... Yeah, Joe, I can hear when you're calling. Can somebody send me the hyperlink to get on the computer?
I'll give it a whirl.
Okay. In the meantime, I'll stay on the phone.
I just sent the hyperlink to everybody. But I can... I sent it in the chat, but I can send it to who's asking for it. Who is the one requesting?
Sandy.
Sandy, okay. Let's see. Your name isn't coming up to message. But what's your email, Sandy?
It's S.Lajudice. It's S.L.A.J.U.D.I.C.E. At yahoo dot com.
All right, here it comes. All right, I just emailed that to you from the Vetea Live. It went into your junk folder.
Okay, I just sent you, Sandy.
There she is.
Yay! All right. Thank you.
Is John here? Joe? John Ballas?
It's all black. I can't... And I tried calling him and he's not answering. So, and I sent him a email. Let me see. Yeah, I... It got sent up, so...
I'm on the phone yet, so...
Okay. Let's go ahead and restart this meeting then, or give that a whirl. Doug, we've got a quorum at least.
Okay, can people hear me?
Yes.
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 Okay, then I call this meeting to order. Planning and Zoning Commission, City of Bisbee. Time is 6:06. Those present are John Ballas. Balla, are you present? Douglas Dunn is present. Sandy Housman?
Yes.
Okay. Nancy Pirana?
Yes.
Jennifer Ryan? Michael Spencer?
Yes.
Okay. And Louis Pollock? Okay. We'll call to the public. Are there any items that someone wants to speak to that's not on the agenda? If not, we'll go to Agenda Item 1. And I'll just do abbreviated here. Public hearing to consider a rezoning application at 302 South Washington Avenue. Discussion of possible recommendations of the mayor and city council. Joe, would you want to give us information on this?
Sure. This is... This piece of property is city-owned and the city is interested in having it developed or co-developing with somebody, but to be able to maybe place some tiny houses on the property. But to do that, we need to change the zoning. And so the easiest one that has a lot of opportunities for residential, as I think I had sent you guys this information, but is RM. And that is consistent with what's across the highway on Washington there. So that's what we're looking to change it to. And to do this would be also consistent with our general plan regarding infill and the development there of the San Jose neighborhoods. And we'd like that to happen, but you guys are the boss here and give us some direction.
Describe the property to me. I was there and I'm a little bit confused. There's 302, is that city off? Because now there's a manufactured housing house on that property, 302...
You went north instead of south. This is on South Washington Avenue. The other side of the highway. It's undeveloped property.
Okay. Okay, so it's a dead end down there.
Yep.
Okay. Is there any input from... This is a public hearing, from anyone?
I didn't get any notification of any sort from anybody on that.
Hey, Joe? This is Mike. Does the city have a partner in mind already to develop this property?
We do. There's been a lady who's interested in making this happen. And we were trying to facilitate that.
Can you disclose that name?
I don't have that name in front of me. So, no, I don't have that name.
Is that the name that was on the application in our email?
I believe you don't have anybody on there but the City of Bisbee for this one.
Right.
I filled out that application myself.
Is it a local party?
No. I think so. I really don't know the lady. I've talked with her on the phone several times and participated in. She did a presentation for the library on cohousing.
Okay, so this is cohousing, okay. Other questions? Comments?
Joe, I do think I saw that on the email, I think I saw it's a lady and there's... She's 40% owner with her husband and then 20% is the other investor. Is that right?
I have no clue. I didn't send you anything like that.
Okay.
That was the old deed. The city bought the land.
Okay, understood.
Yeah.
Does anyone want to make a motion on this?
I will. I move the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend to mayor and city council the rezoning of APN 10215057 from C2 to RM, the City of Bisbee at 302 South Washington Avenue.
And who made this motion?
Sandy.
Sandy, okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Who made that? Is that John?
Nancy.
Mike? Huh? I can't... Who seconded the motion?
Nancy.
Nancy, okay. All in favor then? Let me do a roll call. Sandy?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And Doug? Yes. So unanimous, four. We'll move on then to the next agenda item. And Item 2. Public hearing to reconsider an application for transfer of city property. Discussion of possible recommendations of the mayor and city council. And this is the item that's on 125 Star Avenue that we discussed before. Joe, would you like to carry this forward?
Yes. The reason why we're hearing this again is because when we got this... I've discussed this issue with some of the people here in City Hall. And we thought that it would be better to not have the lot right next door to the one that Mr. Ayers wanted with the same size, which is rather small and kind of down in the wash. So it doesn't... It's not a very nice piece of property. But if it didn't go with the first piece, it was never... It was just gonna sit there and never be used, in my opinion. And so what we did was we brought it back again with the second piece. And we're adding that on there for kind of a very reasonable price, I think, for Mr. Ayers. But I think it's better for everybody this way. And if you remember that the... That the fire department had rang in on this and said that it was a good idea. And Public Works had said yes. The police department hadn't responded. I'm recommending that this pass because it's good for the city and it's a reasonable thing.
Is Mr. Ayers still on the line here with us?
Yes.
Hey, would you wish to speak on this?
Oh, I think Joe summed it up pretty well. Yeah, I was willing to buy the additional piece in order, you know, to move ahead.
Okay, great. Other... Do we have questions and comments from commission members?
I have none.
I have a question. This is Sandy.
Hi, Sandy.
Hi. The original 3,000 square feet that came before us last time was going for a sale price of $2 per square foot. But I see now that the price has been reduced. Is this for the entire 6,000 to $1.33? And what's the reason for that?
The reason for that is because we took the original price and then added... I'm trying to think what I figured for the lower lot, but then it's got to be equalized. So it came out at $1.33. But because the bottom lot isn't worth very much, like I had said, it's... If you looked at the property, it's kind of down in the wash and on a very steep hillside. And it doesn't front on any usable road. That portion doesn't. So it's a lot cheaper. So that brought the price of the total square foot price down, but it brought the price up.
But it'll still have to go... It'll still go for public auction?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So this... Joe, this is John Fraser and Aviva Trustman.
I see you, John.
Yeah, will public auction... Is there gonna be an announcement, making this available to the public and anybody who's interested in that parcel?
Yes, sir.
And the other part was you said that you had... You would look into making sure that the county separated that from the other parcel with same APN?
There's a much larger parcel across the street that shares the same ID number. And having dealt with the city and the county on a number of these issues, down the road, I don't want to see this number come up, or I would hate to see this number come up in relation to the much larger, almost half-acre parcel with the same ID number across the street. Is there any intention, or is there a way to distinguish one parcel from the other at this point?
Right now, they have the same parcel number, but we've got maps and everything that are associated with this application that are very specific and for the lot numbers that are down there by Mr. Ayers' property. And once it goes into a different owner's name, there's no way that the county will be able to leave those numbers the same. I don't agree with them being the same today, John, but that's the reality that we have.
Well, I'm just concerned. I mean, we plugged in the same numbers. Having received your call, your public notice, we plugged in the numbers to the county recording assessor's map. And not only did we not see the parcel that you're discussing in front of Mr. Ayers' property, the only one that came up was the half-acre parcel across Star Avenue. And down the road, you know, a few years ago, that very parcel was under some debate from a neighbor who wanted to acquire that property. And I just think the easiest way is to deal with that now, you know, before this property is transferred to Mr. Ayers, then after. You know, somebody might come in and say, well, I purchased this property from Mr. Ayers and it identifies it as...
APN number.
The APN number, 10360249. And according to the map that's shown on the county assessor's office, that includes that half acre across Star Avenue.
Okay. The option will be very specific, John. It's based on the map. It's also based on the square footage there. And it's based on the description of the property as lot. I don't have this... Well, I do take time to look for it here. But it's described as by the lot numbers, which also differentiate very readily. And it will be taken care of, but it's not taken care of at this point. There's no way that could have done it in the last two days, John.
Is there a way that when this comes up for auction, that the... Whether it's Mr. Ayers or anybody else who acquires that property can be certain to record it with a survey? Because that's what we do, things by meets and bounds.
It will be... It won't be by a survey, but it will be by a legal description.
Okay.
Okay.
That's fine.
This is Mike. We did some research on this today also. And I also actually went up to the property today. I can't figure out what property we're talking about up there. I did notice that there's a house on top of the hill that appears to be vacant that I've never seen anybody in.
It's Mr. Ayers.
Yeah.
Are you planning on moving to Bisbee or are you gonna stay in Oregon?
I'm in between. And what's happened, I would have been there here this last summer, but I was working in Yellowstone. And but I am retired and so I'm in between properties right now. So I'll be back there in February.
Is this the forum to discuss Mr. Ayers' intent for use of the property?
Not really.
Well...
Well, I only ask because if he wants it for parking, we may have a different response to it versus whether he intends to erect another structure on that property and/or...
Yeah, it was primarily for parking.
The original application says for parking. And I do see on the original...
Go on, Joe.
Application, it does identify lots 19 and 20.
So will it be classified with some zoning distinction at this point?
Can you be more specific? What kind of zoning distinction?
Well, I'm saying, will this be, you know... If this transfers, will it be zone... Transfer with a zoning of R1 or C1 or RM or combination?
John, this is not an application for rezoning. This is only for sale property. It's R1 right now and it would remain that.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any comments or questions on this?
Well, like I said...
Thank you, John.
This is Mike. I'm still confused of what property it is. You know, on the drawing that I have, it shows as, you know, the old lot. First of all, in the application, they're using the original assessor's map from, I don't know when. It was quite some time ago. But if you go to the current county assessor's map, it's significantly different.
Mike? Did you erect at the site where the house is on the hill?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that is Mr. Ayers' house. There's the road coming up that's on the south side of that house. Did you see that?
It's knocked down grass, yes.
Yeah. That's a public easement or public right-of-way. And just to the south of that public right-of-way is where these lots are on that steep hillside there. And there was a public notice. I'm sorry.
It would be sort of a triangular lot.
The rectangular.
Triangular.
I understood you said triangular. I said rectangular.
Well, it is rectangular. Okay. Then, I said, I'm just confused. And again, my last comment was, didn't the city sell a piece of property just up the canyon from there on Star just recently for about $2.50 per square foot?
I think it was $2, but yeah.
Okay.
But that's what that was... If you've been up there, you'll see that's flat material that we're talking about over there. And I don't think it's unreasonable, the price. But a public option, it's gonna be a public option, Mike. And public options determine what the true value is of everything.
I understand.
Just at the beginning that we're looking at, just to start with the price.
Like I said, I was just confused with the application. It was very difficult to understand. And I guess I'm just whining about that. I'm done with questions.
Joe, I have one more question. Is the public... For the public auction, do you send out notice to those same people who receive this public notice as well?
I'm not sure, John. It's been so long since we had a public auction. There'll be... It'll be going before this... There'll be a public notice when it goes before the city council. Let me see if I can look that up really fast here. But it'll be... Actually, it will be at least a public notice that is on the city's website and the city's bulletin boards, at the very least.
Okay.
It will be public notice.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you want to move forward on this? Is there a motion?
I'll read the motion. I move the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend to mayor and city council the transfer of 6,000 square feet property from APN 10360249 for the sum of $1.33 per square foot.
Is there a second?
I'd like to amend that motion. It appears that we're just selling it outright. It doesn't state that we put it up for a public auction at a minimum price of $1.33 per square foot.
Okay, that's been incorporated into the motion then? The motion that would be for auction at the minimum of $1.33 per square feet.
I'll second that motion. Mike?
Okay. And let's take a vote here then on this. Sandy?
Yes.
Nancy?
You got to turn your speaker back on.
And Mike?
Yes.
And Doug?
Yes.
So unanimous four votes. Okay, the next agenda item is four, and that's been removed. Is that correct from the?
No.
Again, huh?
No. What happened is that Nina, Nina made up the agenda based on the information that was there. And it got kind of, we got a little bit sideways on this, that, that the Ms. Ponte had originally given me an, a application. But we didn't, I think I sent this out to some of you or all of you, I'm not sure, but that we got the application, we, we public noticed it, and then I realized that Ms. Ponte had sent emails stating prior to this, not as a reflection on her, but she said that she didn't want to do the, that she didn't want to participate in that. And so the city is actually the applicant, and so we're moving forward with the, with the potential option of that property, and the city is sponsoring it.
I'm, I'm sorry, this is Ginger. I was finally able to get back.
Welcome, Ginger.
Thank you. I still can't get the computer to work, but the telephone is connected.
Yep.
Good to have you.
Okay, Joe, would you want to, Joe, would you want to describe this, this agenda item for us then?
Okay. It's a little, it's a small piece of property. It's about, they're about some 731 square feet, and that's 0.02 of an acre. It's unaddressed property. There, there had, I guess back in the eighties, there was a, there was a building on that site that got tore down. According to what I've been told, I don't remember the building.
Much later than that, actually.
Okay. The, the property is, it's small, but it's, but it's right there. I mean, it's a really great location. And there's no sense for the city to be sitting on it. And so that's why we move forward with the potential option of the property.
Basically, one, are the comments or questions?
Are we talking about just that little bitty triangle on the corner of the parking lot in Commerce Street?
Yes.
This is, this is
It's not exactly a triangle, but it is, it is kind of triangular.
I mean, I've seen it, and there's a hillside included in that little piece of land too, right?
I think there is, yes.
One time, there was a beautiful house on that property that
Maynard.
Maynard Krebs built, and it was 350 square feet that was, you know, it felt like 700 square feet. It was on the home tour one year. Beautiful house that he built right there. And I think it was when the city had to do channel work underneath the parking lot that they bought it from the current owner and raised it. Like, correct, anybody can correct me if I'm wrong. Doug, you may know.
I don't.
It was, it was not that long, maybe 15 years ago, there was a, a beautiful, brand-new house that list, existed there for about three or four years, and it was gone.
A, a little piece of property, or did it extend where the parking lot is now?
No, it was right there. And as I said, it was, it, the house, I think it was literally 320 square feet, and Maynard was a carpenter. And you walked in there, and he had cupboards that came out from underneath beds. It came out of walls. It came out of ceilings. So it felt much larger than it was. But that's exactly where it was, in, in that little triangle. It didn't extend out in any direction. It was just on what is now a dirt triangle by the telephone pole there. And I think, I think the city raised it when they did some work on the, on the channel underneath the
Yeah, they had to retimber, they had to retimber that channel that goes underneath Commerce Street.
Yeah. And I think at that time, they bought it from the then-owner and, and raised it.
Joe, have you discussed this with the fire department at all?
The fire department was, was, gave me an affirmative response that they were, they were in favor of selling the property, that they could not see any issue that they would be having.
You know, my real concern is, is the traffic that goes around the parking lot in Commerce Street if something were to be set up there.
That could be a concern almost anywhere, too.
It would, it would be difficult to have any setbacks on that property, as currently prescribed by the regulations.
Right.
Commercial property doesn't necessarily need a setback either, John.
So if it's zone R1, is that the one we're talking about?
It really, yeah, I do believe it is zone R1, is what I had looked it up. But everything by, by default is R, wanted to be an R1 when they had made up the zoning maps for reasons beyond what I understand. And so that's, that's zone R1. But I probably, probably should have rezoned it at the same meeting here, or attempted to rezone it. But it's currently R1, but it'd be easily changed.
Assuming it would go through the same process as the last property we're talking about.
Public auction.
Public auction, and then whomever bought it would apply if they so desired to have the zoning changed.
Exactly.
So, oh, I'm sorry.
What is the price per square foot on that one?
I was gonna, I was recommending $5 a square foot as a, as a, by the way, that the wording that was used on all of these, it said the sum of, we want to say the minimum bid, when we, when it comes time, if you guys want to make a motion. But $5, Sandy.
I'm, I'm a little confused still. Are we actually, is it, this is for the transfer of property, yet you said she withdrew her application?
Yes. Well, no, she didn't withdraw her application. It was just, the, the transaction was never completed. There was no exchange of money.
And I, I can answer that question. I can speak to that a little bit. I was actually looking at the time at a different piece of property. And I actually learned about this property and where it was located because I saw the signpost go up. And I wasn't sure if it was somebody else who was bidding on that one, or if it was a mistake. So anyway, the parcel number I was originally working with was meant to be a different property. Then we found out that there was some confusion here. And then I retracted my application for the original property that I was interested in primarily because I wasn't sure when a public auction would happen, and if that's going to be sometime well into the future, maybe after COVID's over, or a year to three years from now. I didn't see the point at the time to go ahead and move forward with applying for a transfer of property until we get through the COVID situation. So I submitted an application for a parcel that was different than this one, and I retracted it the following morning. And then later found out that my name was still attached to this application. So it was just a little bit of confusion. But what I did learn about this property, when I started to notice it and I saw the sign posted there, is that yes, it was a tiny house at one time. And if any of you remember Bill and Val that owned The Grand, they at one time inhabited or owned this tiny house. And at some point in time, it was removed due to some sewer issues or something that took place underneath the property. But currently, it is located, as you suspect, on Commerce Street and the parking lot corner, just below 52A, which is a residence. And right now, it is being used as parking, whether that's legal or illegal parking is, is not to be determined by me, but there are some, some definite parking occurrences that are taking place there now. I hope that provides a little bit of background information. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to, to answer.
Other comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So the, the, the parking that you're referring to, I know that, I, I know the house. I know the parking. And you're referring to the sign that says this, these two parking spots are reserved for this house only? And then you're, then that?
No.
Oh, Nancy.
No, I was, the, the sign I was mentioning was that I saw the public notice sign posted on a tree at this lot. And I was curious about it. And I didn't know that my name was attached to that signpost on that tree until I saw the agenda and realized it was not the one that I had originally had been considering. But there are now no parking signs on this lot. There are people parking there without any, no parking signs.
Okay. No offense intended on that, you bet.
Easy mistake. It's all good. Thank you.
Okay, this is Doug. We've, this is Doug. We've had discussions in the past about parking, public parking needs in, in Bisbee, and they're quite short. This is an example of piece of city property that could be incorporated into some type of public parking. Is that something we are interested in doing at some future time?
Let me see what, if I got an email back from, from Mr. Harrow regarding this.
Now, this is Mike. I'm familiar with that lot. It's, it's on, half of the lot is on a slope. It's basically got one compact parking stall on it. And that's
Right.
We're going to get out of it. And it has been used for quite some time by somebody that lives in the neighborhood.
And there's a power pole there, too, right, right next to it?
Right next to it.
And irrelevant information, I do have an email here from Alberta Chave saying that the police department has no concerns with it, with the, with the possible transfer of that property.
Does someone want to make a motion? How do we want to move forward on this?
I was glad we made the motion, but I did not receive the agenda, so I can't read the motion. But I would gladly do it if I, if I had the, the paper in front of me.
I'll read the motion then. I'll read it. It says, I move the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend to mayor and city council the transfer of 731 square feet property from APN 103-60-249 for the minimum sum of $500 per square feet at public auction. Right? We want to include that?
I second that motion.
Okay. We'll take a vote then.
I think you read the wrong one, possibly, Doug. Agenda item is a different parcel. Let me see. No? Am I looking at the, I'm sorry about this. 249.
That's what I see on the public notice.
The agenda has $5 per square foot. And I found a picture of the property that's in
Let me, let me open up and, and see what that, that parcel ID number is, because that
10362435, according to your public notice.
Right.
Okay, so then the motion is stated incorrectly.
Yes, 435. Thank you, Doug.
So APN, what's the number again? 103? 435. Okay, so my motion is amended then to the parcel number is APN 10562-435. Is that correct? 103, okay. 62. APN 103-62-435.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And, and we propose then for a minimum of $5 per square foot at auction.
This one, on private auction, wouldn't it?
Sorry, guys. I just want to note that on the agenda, there's two different numbers referenced. So up where the agenda item three states the number you just read, APN 103-62435, but if you scroll down to the following page, that then also references the same square footage with 10360249. So there are two different numbers on the agenda. And I have a pic post, but I can't read it. So
Right. 249 is the Star Avenue property parcel number.
Or 35 is the correct, is the correct parcel ID number for the parcel that we're talking about. I've got the map open right now, and I'd already checked.
Okay, tell me again.
10362435 is the correct parcel ID number for the, for the property that we're currently talking about.
Okay, and that was, that was my motion.
And, and the dollar amount and the square footage would not require a public auction. Isn't that true?
No, because it's not
But don't we want to do, but don't we want to do this by, don't we want to do this by public auction, though?
Yes. When, when it's associated with somebody's property, and they thought it was theirs, we don't go to, we don't go to, or they've been using it, we don't go to public auction. But everything else has to go to public auction, I believe.
Okay. So that's why I inserted that in the motion as well. Do I need, do I need to repeat the motion?
I think you said it right, Doug. Didn't you?
That's what I thought. Is everyone clear on the motion, or do I need to repeat? I'll repeat it again. I move the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend to mayor and council for transfer of 200, 731 square feet property from APN 103-62-435 for the minimum of $5 per square foot at auction.
I second that motion.
Hey, there's a second? And
Who was the second?
Mike.
Mike? Mike, okay. We'll vote on this, Sandy?
No.
No? Okay. Nancy?
Yes.
Yes? Mike?
Yes.
Hey, Doug?
Yes.
So it's three to one.
I'm here.
What about Jennifer?
Oh, pardon me, Jennifer, Jennifer, pardon me. I knew that. Jennifer. What is your vote?
Yes.
Yeah. So it's four to one. I apologize, Jennifer. I, you, I apologize.
That's okay.
Okay. Okay, now where are we here? We're agenda item five. Is that correct?
Yes.
It is a public hearing to consider rezoning.
Well, number four, guys, number four.
We just did number four.
I guess, I, let's see.
Looks like we don't have a three.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. We just, who's not used to it, sorry.
So we're agenda item five, public hearing to consider a rezoning application at 60 Main Street. Discussion of possible recommendations of the mayor and city council. Joe, would you want to describe this for us?
I'm just double-checking those numbers on that one. Okay, this is a request to rezon, this was, this is, the applicant is Mrs. Saro. This was, this is, the applicant is Mrs. Sorrow. And they're using it right now as a, as a location for a mobile food vending and, and it's owned R1. It needs to be, if they're going to use it, they have to, it, it's a good location for a commercial, for a commercial zoning and it's all congruous there. It's, it's not a bad idea, but right now, like I said, everything by default was, was put into R1. And that's why it's R1 right now and we're trying to legitimize what they're doing there.
Is there anyone to speak on this? Is Mrs. Sorrow present?
We have some concerns about the idea of the, the type of commercial property that's being, it's being utilized for right now and the parking issue that we have in that vicinity. And the other, the other issue is while we've got vacant buildings and limited parking, why they can't be using a vacant building, you know, to its highest and best use of the property.
I would love to explain that.
Go right ahead. I'm, I'm open.
So I can answer your question. So basically, this business is a result of COVID and social distancing. And we have noticed that there has been a push with the new world in which we live in to have outdoor eateries and takeaway options. So this Get Some Burgers food stand has come out of COVID-19 and it has come out of a situation in which there's a need that needs to be filled for food options where people can take away or they can choose to dine at, but it's all open air, outdoors and social distance. In addition to that, this business has been a really positive thing that has come out of COVID-19. Not only for myself, I've been in the tourism industry since 17, I'm 47. And my business was basically put in a coma in February, much before anybody else's businesses went down. I was in the, in the business of meetings, corporate events and travel. That's not going to be happening. So, you know, kind of as maybe what was a knee jerk reaction, I started to look at what are some things that I can do here on the home front? I'm living in Bisbee full time. I moved here three years ago. Where is there a need that needs to be filled and what can I do with the skills that I have and put them to work? Right now, there is not a lot of interest in being indoors. As you know, Roka is doing takeaway. Tuis is doing takeaway. High Desert Market is offering takeaway and outdoor seating. Screaming Banshee Pizza is doing takeaway and outdoor seating. So there's a big movement right now to not offer dining indoors. Though recently, over the last couple of weeks, the governor just made that allowable again. But you probably saw a lot of restaurants and businesses close down. And Main Street was looking very sad and very depressed. And people are still looking for options outside of creating their own meals at home. And so that is how this has kind of emerged as a reaction to what's going on in the world today. And it's not really viable at this time, number one, not knowing how well the business would do to encumber ourselves during a time when I've been financially stripped to pay a mortgage on a building where it's not encouraged to cook or serve indoors. So yes, in the future, if the business is to grow over time and if we can go back to a world in which it makes sense to rent a commercial space to expand a restaurant with indoor dining, much like it was in 2019, then that would be a, a definite direction we would want to go in. However, that's not what the world's looking for right now. I hope that answers your question.
Would you please identify yourself for the record?
Yes, this is Yvette Ponte. I am the tenant. I am Maria Sorrow's tenant at 60 Main Street where we are operating a mobile food stand. And during the time that we applied for the rezoning, we have been kind of test marketing that on that space to see if it was even viable as a commercial zone during the pending period of the last six weeks before we could have this meeting.
There are currently no utilities to this site, is that correct?
That is correct. There is no water, there is no sewer. There are no electric or power lines there. It's, for those of you who are not familiar with the space and maybe those of you that are, Maria Sorrow purchased the space nearly 10 years ago and it has been primarily dominated by grasses and other areas. It's, it's a very long, it's like a 66-foot long space that is only about 28 feet wide and it sits right above the parking lot across from 61, which many of you may know as the Grand Hotel. So it's, it's a space that could possibly be used as a very large parking space above the existing parking lots. It did not have an address. We worked with Mr. Ward and the city at the time that we leased it. It had a parcel number, but it didn't have an address. So in 100 years, it has not been assigned an address. It has industrial railings across and around it, which gives the impression that it was a loading dock at one time or was possibly a platform for the railway that went through there. I did send some images today, which I can show you, that will show that there was a Kitchell's Cafe and candy shop originally at 60 Main Street and that was all destroyed in a fire and prior to that area becoming a parking lot, it was all commercial shops and stores in that space. And that space in particular may belong to one of the other buildings in front of it as it didn't have its own address. And, and Mrs. Sorrow, I really kind of have stepped over here because she may want to speak about her property that she owns.
Yes, I did purchase the property about 10 years ago with the idea to at some point develop it as a commercial and to have it rezoned. I wasn't quite ready to do that yet because I'm employed for the school district and I saw it as a retirement venture at some point. And so I was very pleased when it approached me about this and they cleaned up the property. They've, they've given it some great use. So I'm, I'm just, I'm very pleased. And I think it's good, it's good for them, it's good for me, and I think it's good for, for the city of Bisbee right now to have the property used in this way. Prior to them moving in, there was a lot of trash on the property. There was a house nearby in its previous rendition that was kind of a drug house and there was a lot of trash on the property at that point and spillover from that house next door, which has since been sold and fixed up a little. But there still was a little bit of an element of people kind of camping out in that area and next to that area. So having it used in this way right now is definitely an improvement, in my opinion. And as the owner, I feel comfortable in that it's being taken care of. So I would like to see it transferred as commercial at this point. I don't see any use of it for residential property.
I have a question. I have a question for either Maria or Yvette. I am definitely pro-business. I'm definitely pro-restaurant. I have a background in food and beverage. My concern is just the way that the trash is right now in the city of Bisbee. Where, where would you, where, what about the trash situation first and foremost? And then second of all, if someone pulls up into the parking lot and they think that it's for your business, then they could potentially be taking parking, already parking spots away from the city because they are under some impression that they maybe belong to your business. Could you address those?
I would like, if I may echo your sentiments, Nancy. For those of you who don't know, we own a business that's right across the street from that, virtually directly across the street from that. A door up the street, up Main Street. And under normal circumstances, I appreciate the need to create and generate revenue in business during these trying times. We have been open a total of 24 days in the last 10 months. That's not because we haven't been allowed to, it's because we don't feel that it's safe to do so. And, and that's, that's an issue for another discussion that we've had with some other members of the city council and so forth. That said, under normal circumstances, parking on Main Street is, is continuing to get worse and worse and worse. We've been on, either where we are or directly across the street at 76 Main, we're currently at 79 Main, for 10 years, during which time the parking issues have only worsened. To the extent, and, and as we all know, there's no enforcement of the regulations around this town. And I, I, I break them as often as anybody because I know they're, they're not going to happen. We, I park illegally in that parking lot all the time because there isn't any parking legal, there isn't sufficient legal parking there. My concern about this would be that people either coming, seeing a sandwich board that you currently have out on the sidewalk, coming to have a sandwich or whatever fare they have for lunch, are either going to think they can pull in and temporarily stop while they pick something up or they're going to use parking that would be used for all of Main Street while they have their meals. There was a time when any new business was, that was considering opening, was required to provide parking, a certain amount of parking that went along with it. And I, I realize that's for a, you know, maybe there's some distinction between a permanent structure and a temporary outdoor-to-go facility. But that issue is still going to remain, as Nancy says. You're going to be, parking in, in that parking lot is tight as it is and that's not going to make it any easier for, for those of you who do business or are customers to park.
John, do you think it's only for your customers and the one, the other, everybody else?
Yeah, pardon me?
I said, John, do you think that the parking in there is only for the businesses that have been established up to now and not for businesses?
No, but we do have other Main Street opportunities that share the parking. And so we don't have to create more, I mean, it may be a great spot for during COVID and right now, you know, orange cones seem to be the best way to identify a parking spot or other. But, you know, while COVID won't last forever, we hope, that certainly other people will move into the other buildings is our hope to resurrect those buildings and open businesses. That that's what those parking spots are designed to provide their customers.
For all businesses, yes.
Yeah.
I want to remind.
I'd like to, I'd like to interject as the owner, if I may. May I speak? Just thinking about old Bisbee, people come to old Bisbee and they pretty much land. They go to the big parking lot, they find their place and then they wander and they pay their respects to wherever, the, whatever business is on Main Street. So I'm not seeing that people are showing up, driving just to go to this one place, taking up a parking space just for that one place and then leaving or taking it away from another place. They're kind of spreading it all over is the way I see old Bisbee. And the other thing is that this is for a rezoning application to rezone it from residential, which it is not. It's not going to be residential, I'm not going to build a house on it, to commercial, which is more appropriate in this area, which is a commercial area. And that's my understanding of what this motion is or what this proposal is for. I'm not ready to build on it yet. If I was building on it, I would have to have parking spaces, but I'm not building on it yet at this point.
If you are building on it, then don't you have to provide your own parking? I mean, I, that's a question for Joe. So I mean, if you were building a residence, which you're not intending to do, you would have, either you would have parking or you would be on the street parking.
Parking, residents wouldn't be required to provide parking.
Okay, so if it's commercial, are they required to provide?
A new building in old Bisbee would require their own parking.
So if, in this situation with the pop-up location for this restaurant, is that still the same? Is, do they have to provide parking for their customers?
I don't believe so.
There's a moratorium on parking in terms of new development downtown.
No, no, I mean on, I mean on the lot itself. So if you drove up there and you had, you know, three spaces or four spaces for people to park and then dine, would that, is that the way it should be, Jeff?
I can probably clear up some of the confusion if I can answer the questions that Nancy and both the Fraziers have asked. Firstly, thank you. It's a huge compliment that you think that our little burger stand is doing that much business. That's awesome. Maybe that's an insight into the future. As far as the trash goes, we remove our own trash in our own vehicle and we take it to the transfer station. So the trash buildup that many of you saw probably over the holiday weekend, I can assure you 100% was not contributed to by us. We remove probably, it's only about four of the black trash bags every time that we work. There's only four of those. That's how much trash we're creating. We take it away in our vehicle and we take it to the refuse station ourselves. So it's not impacting local Bisbee trash bins. My household probably is impacting local Bisbee trash bins more so than the burger stand. As far as the parking goes, what we are finding is that it is a very quick experience for people that come and eat. They're not staying for long periods of time. Many of the people are tourists that are already parked overnight, that are like staying at the Bisbee Grand Hotel, for example.
Mostly.
Or Castle Rock or even the Copper Queen. So we end up interacting and talking with a lot of the people that are coming and there's a vast majority of them that are already tourists that have already had a presence in town and have already been parking somewhere. We are also attracting a lot of locals that are foot traffic. Most of our traffic is foot traffic. I would say 80 to 90% of it is. There are a few cars that we happened to notice that will pull up there and our neighbors are really awesome at 52A. We do have some signs up so that we don't have traffic incidents. And if we do notice something that's happening, I'm the first person that runs out there and says, hey, you know, we need to, we need to ask you to please go ahead and park down the street elsewhere. So we are doing quite a bit of policing in terms of the minor, very minor parking issues that have arisen. And we haven't really had any conflicts or pushback yet. When people stay, we are one of the fastest servers in town, from what we're being told right now. We're able to process an order for up to 12 people within 15 minutes and send them away with that food. I am also running across the street and hand delivering orders as well as driving on a Vespa or a go-kart, or a golf cart rather, to local establishments to deliver food. So the parking space, I feel that's below that lot would be full no matter what, with or without us being there. I'm also aware of a local that has four vehicles that are taking up spaces there that do not move. They could all be claimed as abandoned because since we started there six weeks ago, there are four vehicles in that lot that never move. One is a camper van.
One is a camper.
So I would say that individual who's parking four vehicles is probably causing more of a parking issue in that lot than our little burger stand that has approximately 20 visitors an hour, half of which are probably on foot that are visiting us. And we're only open Friday to Sunday on the weekends. So we're not impacting any weekday traffic and our hours are winter hours. So we're only open from noon to four on the weekends, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. If that helps clear up any of the questions that you have about the parking or the trash.
Yeah, it does. Thank you. And I don't want you to get the impression that I am not for this idea. I think it's in premise, it's a great idea. But part of this is, and I've spoken to, on other topics, but it seems that as we grow as a tourist town, we are coming up against precedent-setting issues. So that's my concern because it's not just the trash, it's not just.
So that's my concern, because it's not just the trash, it's not just the parking, but then it's also, you know, we also lack toilets, there's only one toilet that's in City Park, and so that's also an issue. You know, whether it's your business or any other business that that is brought before planning and zoning, for the purposes of bringing more business to Old Bisbee, we just keep on running up against the same issues over and over and over again. That's my concern, is parking, trash, thank you for explaining that, and then of course bathrooms, because that's the other big one that's in town. And I'm, you know, I have held events in Bisbee before, so I do, I I really do know what a problem these things are.
Commissioners?
Let me jump in here a moment. John, would you want to identify, you never identified yourself, would you identify yourself by name and your your address?
John Frazier, Doug Dunn, at 79th Main Street.
Art Home.
Good.
Art Home and Art Realty.
No, you're you're talking about your business across the street, and I wanted, it was never clearly stated in 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 the transcript here in terms of who was speaking, so thank you.
Art Home is the name of the business.
Correct. I knew that, but I, for the purpose of the record here.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions?
Joe, you go first.
Okay, I think we're suffering from agenda drift, Commissioner. This is, this is about a rezoning, which is a permanent solution, or a semi-permanent thing. A, um, this is not a SUP, a special use permit, or or no, a referendum on Get Some Burgers, which, um, which the business would be more important. I think of the businesses attempt, the business that's currently being used there as a temporary issue, and it did, all of the points you brought up, Nancy especially, you, they're very valid, and we can address those at a different time or however, but the, um, this is just a rezoning issue for the, for Mrs. Sato, really, or Sorrow, I'm sorry.
Correct.
I just want you guys to to not drift off the agenda, that remember that this, this is a rezoning, not not for something temporary like a, like a mobile kitchen.
Well, John, to follow on that, if it's just a temporary business, wouldn't a special use permit be more appropriate?
Not in that location, it wouldn't. In my opinion, that would be a place for a rezoning since it is right there at the commercial district.
I had a couple of comments. That property sits in between my house and my commercial property on the gulch. I consider all of Main Street, although there's a few residential properties there, that whole Main Street property area is a commercial zone. And just because I was here first doesn't mean the rest of us can't come. There's a lot of that sentiment going on here in Bisbee right now, and I think that is wrong. I think we all have an equal opportunity to use our property in for whatever purpose is it's intended to go for. And Main Street is a commercial zone. If we have a parking problem, we have a parking problem, it's not going to go away. Most of the parking problem in Old Bisbee is residents, it's not tourists, it's not shoppers. It, the most of the problems is residents. Because I can claim to be one for a while on the gulch, I parked on the gulch for almost six months. I have now moved my vehicle away from there. So parking should not be an issue, this property is not really acceptable for a house or residence, so it needs to be changed to a a commercial property. That's all I had.
Hey, would you identify yourself, please, your address?
Mike.
Speaking.
Certainly.
Okay. Okay, pardon me, I didn't, I didn't recognize your voice, you sounded different. Thank you, Mike.
Just two other thoughts that came up out of that with respect, you know, to the toilets and everything. We do have some partners locally that are allowing us to utilize their toilets and their business and their places of business, which is very kind of them, some of our neighbors are offering that to us. Also, you know, down the road a while, the business is moderately successful right now, it's, uh, takes a lot of time and and a lot of burgers at the the rate that we're selling them for to really even break even, but maybe down the road, that is something we could think about is is adding some sort of an executive, you know, port-a-potty on certain weekends, especially event weekends, which may alleviate some things, and we can look at our budget and see if that's something that we can squeeze in. Also, with respect to parking, the extension of premises was just approved by city council, and if we wanted to, which we have not done, we could apply to take and use anywhere up to 30 to 60 feet of parking spaces that are below the burger stand, which we are not requesting that we do. But that is an option that's available to us, in which case, that would actually create less parking spaces in that large parking lot that exists below us, and we are not seeking that, but we do have that option available to us as of the last city council meeting. Our goal is to create something that is a social distance option, that is beneficial to the town, that is beneficial considering the current environment in which we all live, and to try to make things better, not worse for Bisbee. And I just thank you all for listening and for your consideration and and understanding and for your thoughts and your comments regarding this tonight. We appreciate all of you and and all of your contributions that you have made in this town individually as well as professionals, so thank you again for the time.
Okay, Joe, would you please describe if we, if the motion before us is rezoning from R1 to CM2, and if we were to approve that, what would be the next step in terms of this, uh, this mobile kitchen?
Well, the net, well, I think you gave me two questions, I don't, but I'm going to answer what I think you asked me.
Okay, good.
Well, I'll do my best. The, um, you're, if if it is passed, if this rezoning is rep, is passed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, then it will go before the city council, and the city council will be notified of what the recommendation was, and they will actually make the decision, there'll be another public hearing.
Correct. And if they they approved it, what would be the next step in terms of approving, uh, the use of that property?
And it would, if they approved it, then the rezoning would go through and the maps would change and that would become the CM2 zoning.
But would they not have to have some other requirements in terms of special use permit or whatever? What would, in terms of locating the, uh, the mobile kitchen there?
In terms of locating the mobile kitchen, there's, um, there's requirements in the International Plumbing Code, which are going, which fall into play here, that every business that, um, that is not, okay, and if you're a restaurant, you have to provide, you have to provide bathrooms, unless you are doing takeout, takeouts are given exemption, there's , um, different exemptions that, um, that Get Some Burgers would would be able to use, but having tables there to eat actually, um, it causes that the need for a bathroom I go. But that's outside of what we're discussing.
Correct.
It's semi-relevant, I'm not saying it's not, Doug.
No, that's, that's what I'm asking is, the fact that we're just talking about a rezoning currently, and the dealing with this particular use would be something would be, would would come through your office in terms of getting approval to continue operation of the.
Yep.
Of the, the mobile kitchen.
Mm-hmm.
So we are not tonight, if we vote on this in affirmative, we would not, would not be a vote for approving the mobile kitchen, it's strictly approval to rezone the property.
That's correct.
I'm confused, the mobile kitchen is already there.
Right.
Under a permit, I'm assuming.
You want to speak to that, Joe?
I, I couldn't tell what she said.
It says it's already there.
Yeah. Very permissive with people during, during the whole COVID thing, Ginger, because, because we're, um, the, the fuel that, that, that our city runs on, the engine of our city, it, the fuel that it runs on is tax dollars and business. If we don't have healthy businesses, we don't have a healthy city. And we've been, I've been permissive during the, as far as people's signs and a lot of, a lot of things, including the, the Get Some Burger. Now, um, who would have thought that that, that wasn't commercial, because that didn't even, I don't think it entered anybody's mind until it came, until, um, we were talking about the address, and it's like, ooh, no, you got a, you got a worse problem than that. So, um, but we've been trying, we've been trying to encourage business and be, be business-friendly is the reason why they're allowed to continue up to this point, but immediately I, I had told, um, the two principals there with Get Some Burger that they had to, um, they had to get this to me, this application ASAP, and they did.
So I can, I can kind of speak to that again as well. I do have documentation if anybody needs to see it, and I did send it to Ms. Williams today, hoping that at least the commission members would receive it, that shows images from the 1920s to the 1940s that everything in that area was commercial, there isn't any residential, and as Mr. Ward said earlier, it might have been an oversight that it was zoned R1. So if anybody would like that information just as backup, so you know what you're working with, this is very difficult information to find, I had to go through the historical museum archives, because most of the pictures cut off right where that entrance to the parking lot starts, but if that helps you understand that the zoning is predominantly and should be commercial, that may help you. In addition, if Get Some Burgers needs to have toilets, because we have tables out, we're happy to remove the tables. The reason we added the tables is, as you know, many have seen Stu's barbecue location and his trailer outside of Frank Barco's place at the Bisbee Observer, and that is where we started. He does offer some tables without bathrooms for his guests, and we were there, but it was very busy and a very active area, and there really wasn't room for us to continue working there, though Frank Barco offers the space to us on a complimentary basis. We could start there tomorrow with our trailer and not have to pay any rent. So what we did, as the area was crowded, we decided to start searching for a location that we could use, that would be better, that would also allow us to pay rent somewhere, but still allow us to work outdoors considering the social distancing environment. We ended up interacting with Maria, we were kind of led to her, because the original space that we wanted to lease was Mr. Cartwright's land, which is adjacent to Castle Rock, it's a very large open space, which we had cleared. We spent time and money out there clearing two very large lots that he owns in the hopes that we could open there and make that a bright spot in town. That deal fell out, and we then started to look for a new spot, in which case we found Maria, and it just has not been even more perfect. I think many of you know, when you move to Bisbee, you might be guided here, and you might be guided to your first home or your first business place, and then something goes sideways, which is perfect, and then you are led to a more desirable position as a result, if you keep your eyes and your minds open to this. So with that said, if, uh, if for some reason Get Some Burgers is holding up Mrs. Sorrow's conversion to commercial too, we would not want that to happen. We will find somewhere else to go and somewhere else to be and somewhere else to operate, or we will not operate at all, which is also an option. This is an interim business for us, as we hope that our meeting and convention business, in which I was making upwards of $500,000 a year, will come back to us in the next three to six months to maybe three years. So this is something that we're doing to keep our sanity and to contribute to our community while we wait for our real careers to come back. So I hope we take that into consideration, I wouldn't want to hold up Mrs. Sorrow's rezoning because of our burger stand. If our burger stand is not wanted in this town for any reason, we can make it go away very easily and very quickly, being that it is highly temporary. Thank you.
Well, I, I just.
Do I have a?
I. This is Nancy, I just wanted to add, Yvette, thank you for telling us all of that, I really appreciate everything that you said. Joe, I wanted to, you know, apologize for, I guess, going off track with my own concerns. I understand that this is completely a rezoning issue, I totally understand that, but, but, but it's, sometimes it's just not so black and white for me, because I think about all the other things that are going to come down the road, especially in my current occupation. And so I just wanted to put that out there. Yvette, I do again appreciate all of what you told me, or us, and Maria, did you have anything to add, or, because I, I saw you maybe wanting to say something, and I don't know if you were cut off or you didn't know when to jump in there.
Me?
Uh, Maria.
Are we ready to make a motion?
This is Ginger. I move the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend to Mayor and City Council the rezoning of APN 10362489 from R1 to CM2 located at 60th Main Street.
Is there a second?
Michael, second.
Okay, I'll take a roll call vote then. Sandy?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Doug, yes, unanimous. Thank you. Go on to the next one, which is called Agenda Item, huh? Six.
We're just gonna say, thank you, we're, we're leaving the meeting.
Okay, thank you for allowing us to comment and participate and observe, Joe and Doug and fellow members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, it's, we were, our, our mailbox was stuffed with notices, we happened to be in the right proximity for this meeting, and in three of the issues you brought up so far were related to us, and thank you for allowing us to share your meeting and and your comments and thoughts with with us this evening, appreciate you very much.
Thank, thank you all.
This next one's related to you too, John, as a Realtor.
What?
Wait a minute.
I, I said that the next one might be interesting to you as a Realtor. Well.
Okay, let me continue on, then Agenda Item Six, Public Hearing on a Proposed Amendment to the Zoning Code, Possible Recommendation to the Mayor and Council. Joe, would you describe this for us?
Okay, we, we went over this several different, several different times, and because the, um, there's, there'd been a contrary, some contrary provisions in the, in the zoning code that, that said that, um, that prevented, that prevented for a while that there was no, there's been no ability to rebuild utilizing the setbacks from a demolished or burnt structure in the historic district, and we're trying to restore that, and this is, seems like the best way to do it. So, um, so that people will be able to rebuild in places without that, without, without diminishing the setbacks or increasing them, I should say, but I want you guys to know that the, the building codes would still be enforced, which have a stricter, anytime you're closer than five foot to the property lines, you've got, um, one-hour fire separations on both sides of a wall, and those kind of things, and then sometimes, and you get closer than you, you're not allowed windows, you're not allowed eaves, those things that, um, it has to do with science that the, um, the building codes are going to cover, protect, it's not, it's going to be less protection, but, um, it's a reasonable solution to a historic town like we have.
This would allow, number four to proceed and put another house in that little tiny lot, wouldn't it?
Which tiny lot?
The one, item number four, that we had before, a 700 square foot lot.
It would be awfully weird.
Pardon?
You, you might if you got really creative, but it'd be awfully hard to do, I think it'd be, um, for residential, you've got to have windows and how do you, and you can't, and you can't put a window when it's, when you're closer than two foot to the property line and such.
Right, but this, this change would allow that to happen?
No, it wouldn't allow, it wouldn't allow you to violate the building code, this would allow rebuilding.
Okay.
Other questions or comments from anyone? Mission members? You talked about this in prior meetings.
Joe, who writes the amendment? Is this committee that writes the amendment, or is it somebody in City Hall that writes the amendment?
I usually give you something to go off of, but whatever we wind up with will go before the, the city attorney. And they might adjust what we're saying, but as long as we're not, we're not debating in what we're accomplishing, that wording might be adjusted to make it more legal.
Then would it come back to us?
No.
Okay. Other comments? I guess this is specifically, the motion does not indicate, this is Article 5.3.2d, correct?
It does not. She kept it rather generic in the way that she described it. And, but I think it is accurate and usable, but it wouldn't be, it'd be more specific when it goes before City Council.
Okay. So, are we ready to make a motion?
Okay, this is Ginger. I'll do it again. I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend to Mayor and Council a proposed amendment to the Bisbee zoning code to establish the right to rebuild utilizing the setbacks of a demolished or burnt structure on the same parcel in the Bisbee Historic District.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. I'll take a roll call vote. Sandy?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Doug? Yes. So, it's unanimous. Passed. We now move to Commissioner comments. This is refrained from any discussion. Comments only. Does anyone have anything that wish to share?
Well, I apologize for being late. I could not connect, so.
Well, that's true for me too. That was true for me too, so.
Okay.
Bad problems, connection. Other comments, and also moving on to future agenda items? Let me speak to that, then. I think we've gotten, some of us have gotten a letter regarding the need for fencing standards, standards for construction of fences. Is that something we could add to a future agenda meeting? Also, do we need to have, we've had some discussion about how to deal with food trucks. Is that something that we want to have as a future agenda item?
I would definitely say that we need to revisit the tiny houses and the food trucks. That is going to be in our world sooner than later.
And of course, the third item, which we've brought up repeatedly, and it kind of frustrates me when we have discussions about parking, which we're having here tonight, the city has not moved forward in terms of implementing, you know, a parking plan for, a parking study and plan for Bisbee. So, that's certainly a continuing agenda item that we've brought up before, and this meeting tonight illustrates that we, we still need to work on that. Any other suggestions for future agenda items? Do I have a motion for adjournment?
I move we adjourn.
The meeting is adjourned. And I thank you for, this is an odd meeting here in terms of the electronics didn't work exactly perfectly, but we got this meeting done. So, thank you all.
Hard for the problems we have. You guys, you guys are great.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.